Well, as long as you're standing. Call a meeting to order, we'll wait till you take your coat off, how's that?
To the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the play of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record reflected all members are present this evening, including our student rep and all the principals. Well, we'll move right into a principals' report, student rep report. Brandon, as long as you're here, we'll let you go first, how's that?
This month, but we have winter carnival coming up, and that's on Friday, March 14th. Some things that they're gonna be doing that day is that the kids can decide to go to Giants Ridge all day. That day, they all pay to go. Or they can go in the morning and do dodgeball or badminton. And then, in the afternoon for lunch, there's gonna be a burger bash going on. And then, in the afternoon, all the kids are gonna be able to play water polo and bingo. And/or anybody who doesn't want to do those, they can do like a game room or like a board game room to go to. And that's all I have.
Who would like to go first?
At the Franklin, we're culminating. Culminating activities of the I love to read month. We're hoping to get the kids out one day, but we might have to postpone that to sometime next week. But for the last two weeks, our first grade's been able to carry the torch, better than any other grade level as far as the reading goes. So that's kind of exciting for them. We've got some great prizes for the kids at every grade level. The boy and girl that gets the most amount of reading in the upper grades will receive bicycles.
... by an individual in a group. And then, our little ones will get those big plastic sleds, similar to toboggan-looking things, so it's kind of fun. Coming up in March, March 11th, the 4th grade goes to the Laurentian Environmental Center. They do their one day of winter fun. I believe it's snow shoeing, ice fishing, and I don't know what the third is, but they do a number of winter activities. That was scheduled for tomorrow, but because of the cold weather, we put it off into March. And then, as we're looking into early April, we have spring picture day. And April 24th, we already have kindergarten roundup, so coming fast.
Okay, well, thank you. Jeff?
Last week, we were supposed to, on Friday, we were supposed to have our winter Olympics outside. We had some activities planned. We moved that up to Thursday, anticipating a bad day on Friday. And it was a beautiful day on Thursday, actually, it was about 30 degrees out. We pulled the whole school out onto the football field and waded through the snow up waist-deep. For some of the smaller ones, it was, we had to... We brought everyone back, I mean, that was the good news. But we had, by class, we had snow shoe races and we had sled relays. One was pulling in a sled back and forth across the field. And then, we had, after that was done, we had a boot race. It was a 50-yard dash. There were prizes, the PTSO gave us prizes for each of those. Kids had a good time, we were outside for about three hours in the afternoon. It was a good break, 'cause we don't get outside too much. In fact, we got back to school today, and it's like we're living in an igloo now, because the snowdrift is over the top of the main entrance in the office in Gilbert School, so it's all we can see is snow now. This coming Friday, we're having our closing ceremonies. Right now, the 6th grade is carrying the torch in our building. They have about 1,300 reading AR points. The 5th grade is close behind it, about 1,250. The Masonic Temple, thanks to the Masonic Temple, they donated four bikes to us. The top individual readers are gonna get those. I just had a last note on Wednesday night, that at 5:30, there's a welcome home ceremony for Jeff Isaacson at the Curling Club, if anyone wants to go, everyone's welcome. Curling Club is putting that on the school list.
What time do you?
It's 5:30.
5:30?
Oh, at the Curling Club. They didn't fare so well, but they represented us well. I mean, it was really cool. We had, I had lots of media outlets contacting us throughout the last two weeks. We had, both ABC and NBC were interested in doing stories on them. It was really cool. Kids enjoyed it, we got to see them a couple times during the day. There were two occasions where they were playing during the day, so... That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question, Jeff. On that, for the reading section, is it just the 5th and 6th grade, or is it also junior high?
No, we're doing a junior high as well.
Okay.
Yes.
The senior high wrapped up registration. Actually, 7th through 8th finished registering students for next year. We did it online, it was fantastic. It saved us days and days of hand tallying and hand entry. Very excited about that. Grade 7 through 12 conferences are Monday night from 3:30 to 7:00 in the high school gym. The 9th grade designed bracelets for bullying prevention. They came up with the idea and the design on their own. They found a company who would manufacture them for them. They ordered 300, and they're selling them to students for a dollar a piece. But they thought it would be good if we donated one to you, so you could wear them too. So that's the black and gold bracelet you've got on your, at your spot today. An update on the one-act play. They, we covered this before, they came in as the runner-up for Section 78. But an administrator from the Minnesota Thespian Society was there at the contest and saw the show. And so, our group was invited to perform on the Guthrie stage, as well as take part in the Thespian Society's two-day conference. So they went down, they had a lock-in at one of the local schools, so they all stayed overnight there. They performed at the Guthrie, it was very exciting. And they came home on that snowy President's Day, but had a safe drive back. So, but the drama department would like to extend their thank yous to the administration and the school board for their support in promoting excellence in the performing arts here. So thank you from Mr. Gritzmacher and his crew. Our math team came in 3rd in the Iron Range Division out of eight schools. Stephanie Madsy was one point away from being one of the top 10-point scorers in the division. Austin Lovas, I never know if I'm saying that right, Lovis. And Charlie Ryan were the other two top scorers for our school. Wednesday, the physics class is going to the toothpick bridge competition at UMD. And as a parent who helped create a toothpick bridge, I know what an incredible competition this is. They put in a lot of work to go there, so we wish them well. And Jack Harvey is advancing to the state swim meet. He will leave the crack of dawn on Thursday morning to get some time in the pool down there. We're having a send-off for him. We've ordered a couple of cakes, that's what the swim team likes to do. So if you'd like to join us on Wednesday, from 11:40 until about 12:30 in the Commons for cake, you're more than welcome to, as we send Jack off. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Achievement recognition? Okay. The board would like to recognize Joey Marlt, who finished 16th at the state alt plane ski meet. It was last weekend at Giants Ridge, I believe. He did a very good job. Is that the only one we have, in all? Okay. There's your input. Anyone who's not on the agenda, who wishes to address the board? Up to, you can go up to the podium and state your name and what you want to do, what you want to say. No worries. Anybody? Okay. Moving on. 6.0, the agenda changes. Debbie?
We're going to delete 10.2 today. Mark Heitzman is investigating another option that may be available to us. So he has to delete that until the next board meeting.
Okay. 7.0, I'm sorry, that was the agenda. 8.0 is request to remove any topics from the consent agenda. Can I do 7.0?
No.
Approve, I'm sorry. Approval of agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. None, we'll do 8.0. Request to remove any topics from the consent agenda. Anyone have anything they want to remove from there? Okay, hearing none. 9.0, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.0, new business. 10.1 is to approve the list of superintendent candidates recommended for interview. And these are only by number, from the way they are. There's no names filed on these yet, we don't know who they are, so...
They're based on the information that was shared with you by Glenn Chido at your meeting?
Like to make a motion to approve the candidates that's been recommended by BKB.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these?
Yes, I do have some. I recognized a candidate profile, and I had the superintendent contact the MSBA attorney on my behalf. According to the School Board Association attorney, it's okay for me to be a part of the process, excluding that one interview. However, I've given it a lot of thought, and I really think it's in the best interest of the district for me to be an audience member during the first six interviews, and to not be an interview team member. And then, I'll make further decisions regarding my involvement as the process moves along. And I also will not avail myself of access to the questions which the board is going to have access to. So just, I want to say that upfront.
Okay. So you're not gonna vote on this, or just for the interviews?
Well, I can vote on this.
But not, you won't be able to?
I will not make myself a part of that. I'll be an audience member, so that I can hear all the interviews.
Just want to make sure.
Then you will consider also, as far as the final vote, on the person that we do select? I mean, you'll think about that?
Yes, but that's into the future, yes. I just think I need to take this one step at a time, and make my decisions.
Right.
As things roll forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now that you have approved them by number, I'm to hand out to you the list of candidates, and they're identified by name.
Other questions attached to that?
You, I was told not to give you the questions in advance. So no one will see the questions in advance.
Did you want one? I have extras. Do you want? Oops.
Oh, you're still hooked up, Debbie.
I know.
You might want to read the names, just so people know who the six candidates are that are being interviewed.
Okay, candidate number one is Brian Kolofsky. Should I say where they're at? Might as well. He's a superintendent in the Bertha Hewitt School District. Number two is Steve Salee, superintendent in the Southland School District. Number three is Jeff Carey. He's the principal at the Evlith-Gilbert School District, we, Nelsonian area junior high. Number four is Brent Brunetta. He's also principal in the Grand Rapids School District. Number five is John Varner, superintendent of the Onami, Onami?
Onemia.
Onemia School District. And number six is James Wagner. He's a principal in the Albert Lee School District. So those are the finalists. Okay. And those interviews will be taking place on Thursday and Friday, starting at 4 o'clock? Okay, 10.3, we have to amend, approve the amended joint powers agreement related to the establishment of a joint cable television access board.
There is a request to have it amended in order for the access board to operate on a calendar year rather than on the district's fiscal year. And by doing so, then the budgeting process becomes aligned to the city of Evlith and the town of Fayle. And making that change is acceptable to the district. So Jackie Junick went through it and made the changes. So in your enclosures, you have a list of what the changes were, and then you have a copy of the joint powers agreement.
I move that we approve the amended joint powers agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended joint powers agreement. Any discussion? Anyone? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 10.4, approve the 2014-2015 calendar.
And you have a revised calendar at the table. Basically, all we did is, on the enclosure that was in your board packet that was sent to you, the comp days were on January 1st and 2nd, and you can't put a comp day on a holiday, January 1st. So we just moved the comp days to December 22nd and 23rd. It doesn't change, really, any days off or anything.
Okay.
And the teachers did vote on this calendar. There were three calendars that were presented to them. Committee of teachers helped with developing those calendars, and this was the calendar that was chosen.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Need a motion and a second?
A support.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.5, superintendent search update.
Well, I think you shared that information already, that the initial interviews are going to be this Thursday and Friday. There'll be three interviews each of those evenings. And then, Tom, March 6th, were you available for the final interviews?
On the 6th, yes.
Okay, so Glenn Chido had, originally, he was looking at the 5th, but that is Ash Wednesday. And so, he would like to move the final interviews to March 6th. And all of you now have responded that you would be available on that date, so I'll let him know that you'll be available. And I'm sure he'll be sending me the time for those final interviews, so...
Okay. Okay, 11.0, Debbie, a superintendent's report?
What I have is, I did receive an email from Tim Hochell regarding ASME negotiations. And Tim did give me three dates for possible negotiations. March 4th, which is already next week, and then March 12th or 13th, starting at 5:00 PM. So I'm guessing the 12th and 13th would be the two days that would be best for the negotiations committee. I'm looking for some input, so I can get back in touch with Tim.
Have we received the proposed language?
No, we have not.
And our hope was to receive that information, so that we could review it in advance of the meeting.
Does this need a reminder?
No, I had talked to one of the ASME negotiators a couple of weeks ago, and they had not had all of the language prepared at that time. They said they had some language prepared, but I haven't heard anything since then, so...
When do we meet in March?
We meet on the 10th. That would be our first meeting in March, would be on the 10th.
So it is possible that we might have language, or more of a language?
If you would like me to request it, that we have it prior to the 10th, I mean, I can make that request.
I think that that's important, so if the board can have a closed session and discuss it as a board. I'm not quite sure what the point is of meeting if we haven't seen that.
I agree. We've said that months ago?
Yes, months ago.
But I think we could tentatively set a date. Either the 12th or 13th, it doesn't matter to me.
The 12th is a Wednesday, and the 13th is a Thursday.
What if we asked him to block both of those dates, so that if we need two days, we would have them? Does that work? Tom? No, but Tom, you are.
No, it's Tom, Mary, Mark.
Yep.
You're getting contention on us getting the language.
Prior to the 10th, so, prior to our board meeting?
Okay, I had sent you in a memo also, that I would like us to really move to using the electronic board book, that I would like to get away from the paper board book. In order to do that, I have to make sure that you have access to the internet. And I know that some of you, in order for you to download it on your iPads, you would have to have like Wi-Fi at home or access to Wi-Fi. I made a decision to get an iPad with a data plan for a board member who does not have internet access at home. Because I think there's so much correspondence going on right now, from Glenn Chido just trying to set times and that for these meetings, that I'm sending emails, and it's really difficult not to be able to email all of you with some of those, just asking you if you're available at certain times. So I did purchase one, but I want to know from each of you whether or not you have Wi-Fi access at home, because if you don't, we're going to get you an iPad that will have a data plan on it, so that we can go to the board book, and it'll be an easy transition to that board book. So if you don't have Wi-Fi at home, you can let me know, and I'm happy to get you an iPad that would have the data plan. Anyone here need it?
I need the data plan.
Also?
Tom? No? Anyone else? Anyone else not sure if they don't have?
I don't know what I have.
You don't know if you have Wi-Fi at home?
I don't know, I have a computer.
Then chances are, you probably don't have Wi-Fi at home.
Do you have to have your computer plugged in to the internet?
Mine's, mine is plugged to the service.
Yeah, you need Wi-Fi then. Get a data plan, you'll need one.
I've got, it's stationary.
Okay. You can't pick it up and move it to different locations in your house, and, okay.
But I do have Wi-Fi in my house.
You have Wi-Fi?
Yeah, I have it installed.
And you have Wi-Fi? Beth has Wi-Fi. Okay, so it looks like we need those, so we'll get those. And it'll just make it easier. And we're checking on the pricing for the board book, so we'll be bringing that to you two for approval.
Now, is the meeting's gonna, I mean, the paper's gonna be on?
The paper's gonna disappear.
Paper's gone, you're looking at a screen.
You're gonna be looking at a screen, and all of these things will be scanned into it. All your enclosures will be scanned in.
More lessons before we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please. I don't even turn it on.
We'll go step by step. We'll go step by step. We need to move in that direction, though. Now that we've missed five school days, I think that we need to talk about some make-up days. And our contract does say that, in order to do that, we need to have a meet and confer with our teachers. Although, the board does have the discretion of, you know, deciding whether or not we'll be able, we will make up some days. So I would like to set up a meet and confer with the teachers. Probably not this week, but I would like to look at some days next week to meet and confer with the executive committee of the teachers, to talk about the possibility of making up some days. So I guess, just, do you know if you're available? I know next week, the 6th is not a good day for you, because you would be doing your final interviews. Are there any other days next week that are just not good for you to meet?
I don't know.
During the day, evening, or what?
It would be at 4:30 that we would meet, because it would be with the board.
Monday for me.
Monday's not a good day?
Not, it's bad for me.
The 3rd? Can't do the 5th? What's your 4th look like? Anyone?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to try to schedule a meet and confer for the 4th.
Debbie, are you looking at student and teacher make-up time?
I think that we need to talk about that. I mean, I think the students have missed five days. I think it's important for them to make up some days, too. But we have to take a look at, what would that mean in terms of calendar changes? Where do we have some days available to make up those? I, there are some needs in the area of professional development, I think, that we could have some professional development days for teachers. So I think we just need to take a look at the calendar for the school year, and look at what's available for making up those days. And I'm not recommending necessarily that we make up all five of those days. But I think we need to take a look at what's reasonable to make up. And I wouldn't bring anyone here unless we had really quality professional development to present on those days, so... All right, so I'll try to schedule meet and confer for the 4th at 4:30. And if we're not able to schedule it for next week, we'll have to look at the following. But I'll get a note out to the teachers tomorrow about that. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. For member topics, I want to start with you.
Today, at 10:15, 10:30, we got an email forwarded from our superintendent with some information in it that we had until noon to respond to. And it was originally sent on a Saturday. I think that it's reasonable for a superintendent not to read all that email and forward it when you've had three days off of school, and you're dealing with all sorts of building issues, and getting students back in the circle of things. But I have some significant concerns. It related to the co-location, and quite honestly, some of us are at work and can't read those emails during the day, let alone respond by noon. I just have some concerns about that process, so I'm putting that out there.
And to be honest with you, yeah, I was sick all weekend. I never even looked at email until this morning.
You should not have to look at email on the weekend.
No, I understand that, but it did come on a weekend, and this morning, when I looked at it, I did forward it.
Yes.
But like, Tom doesn't have access to emails, so he's getting, you know, a hard copy tonight to look at. But I agree with you, it was short notice to respond to that.
I'm sorry.
Well, maybe I...
Well, I worked all weekend, so I haven't seen anything.
Exactly. It just, I feel like we're trying to sell a concept to the public, and we're telling them we're being open and honest, and visible and transparent. And as a board member, I'm feeling like it's not open and transparent. So how can I expect the public to feel that way? So I was very disappointed to see that.
And it's through no fault of anyone in this room. That's it.
Nothing? Yeah.
Nothing at this time?
Close to a record key.
Close. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.